Warning, warning.
I'm not aware of this.
Seven o'clock, we will call the Village Board meeting to order. We want to rise and say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, while our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The board, please call the roll.
Morefka.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Hamm.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the November 12th, 2018 regular Village Board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not a motion to accept as presented.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Morefka, seconded by trustee Hamm.
Morefka?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Bowden?
Present.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
And Jones?
Present.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 11/17/2018 in the amount of $48,887.5. Accounts payable, general fund, $187,402.4. Motor fuel tax fund, $31,009.43. Water and sewer fund, $787.72. Giving a total of all funds, $219,199.19. Are there any questions on any of the bills? Not a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Hamm.
Parker?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Morefka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item? Police chiefs report.
I just, real quick, to you, ladies and gentlemen, I just got off the phone with Bob, and I know Troy's on his way, the Corning Avenue and the Route 50 barricades. I talked to the barricade guy, happened to see him out there today, and I think this will be discussed later with you, but the big holdup has been the new part of Corning that's only partially done, because it needs to be resurfaced, so that'll be next year. They're waiting to decide whether they're going to paint the turn lanes on a temporary surface, or put a double yellow for the center until next year. That's what's been holding all this.
That was one of my questions.
That's what's been holding up. I happened to run into the guy who runs the barricades. We've been waiting for two weeks for this, at least that long, waiting for the discussion. Engineer wants it painted with turn lanes, and we'd rather just double yellow because it's temporary.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we want to get it open before I have another darned snowstorm.
Right, exactly.
And I think the businesses are affected along there, would like to get all that snarl up there. So, you know, that's something for the board here to hear about, so it does about that, because that's why we're concerned about Route 50, trying to get that up. Oh, here he is. So, I really wish the rest of the... Troy.
Do we have any accidents out there, Bill, since all those barricades have been up?
Had about, I think, four or five accidents out there. And it's, I'm surprised that, first known, not this last one, we even had more because it was ugly out there. So, that's kind of a fact.
So, we're talking about the Route 50, Corning Avenue barricade situation?
Yeah, it's not good. Iroquois paving has not been good at coordinating their scheduling with their subcontractor. There's miscommunication on Friday. They told us it would get done Friday, where they would get the barricades down, they'd get the temporary striping in, so they could open the road. They didn't show up Friday. There's an issue with the, they didn't have, Iroquois didn't have the street cleaned, so the striper couldn't put down the stripings, because they need the stripings before they could open it. So, we've been on them. Our resident engineer at the job, Dave Weber, has been calling, everybody knows Iroquois, just trying our best. I don't even want to say this, but they said possibly tomorrow, but it's big possibly, so.
Well, I was just telling the board if I could intervene.
Sure.
I ran into the gentleman that part of the barricades and the striping. There must be a real communication snafu, because they're saying, "We're asking for turn lanes to be put in on a temporary road," and they'd rather double yellow with temporary tape until next year. I said, "Well, we've been waiting all this time to get this road before we have a major cluster, and it seems like a lot of finger pointing who's causing the delay." So, the guy out there says, "We're ready to put the double yellow down and get this road open, get these barricades," but somebody's got to tell Iroquois what the decision is and move on. But that's only a version of the groundwork guy out there.
And what, were you talking about turn lanes on Corning, or on?
On the new part of Corning.
The new part of Corning.
They're thinking, in discussion, that turn lanes on the new coming out to Route 50, they said, "Your engineer wants turn lanes painted on them now." I don't know who said what to what, but that's why the delay is, because like I said, we've been waiting.
Yeah.
At least as long as what you and I just talked about, we've all been waiting, and the weather, you know, and I know it is a mess out there.
So, in the temporary condition, I told them, "Just get something striping down. It's still a stop sign. We don't need turn lanes," and I'll make that clear if that, you know, I don't know where that came from, but...
All right.
Because I said, you know, "Just get it open. It's still a stop sign. The city's not up, so we don't need the, you know, the left turn lanes that are in our plans."
Correct. Okay. Yeah, if you can push that, please.
Yeah, we're trying.
Okay.
Send it in four languages, you know. Big four, whatever. But anyway, that's just kind of the update, because I seen one of the gentlemen that's been out there doing all the time, said, "We're ready to get it out of here," but, you know, and I said, "Well, see, it's not time to get it out of here, because it's a snow that I think we have to get out of here." So, thanks for it.
Sure, yeah.
Right. Anything else, Troy? What you got?
Um, I guess just, Ratchy Road also, their plan all along was, you know, they wanted to get the sidewalk in last week or this week, but obviously this snowstorm hit, Iroquois, now I'm wrong contractor, P.T. Pharoah, they're still optimistic. They said they're keeping their plan open a while. It's all going to depend on weather. The schedule's kind of up in the air now after what, you know, the snow that just came down, so if they have good weather, they will try to get the sidewalk and landscaping done, and then if they have really good weather, they can paint the surface. But, you know, at this point, it's hard to tell and probably not likely.
Right.
But they're going to wait and see, but they will open the road. We don't, I asked for a schedule for it, they just don't know, because it's been on weather still. But then, Ratchy Road will be open. The one thing they have to do is make some sort of temporary entrance for the school, because that school has a concrete driveway, so if they can't do poorly concrete, then they'll have to make a temporary entrance there.
Do you think we could same quality of sidewalks and landscaping in the middle of December as we get in May?
Um, they have cold weather sidewalk mix, which they would use, and they put blankets over to protect it, so IDOT allows it when you take those precautions, but...
But my question would be, would you have sidewalks and driveway poured at your own home in December?
Might not want to, I mean, yeah. If the village wants to tell them, just stop, and they'll do it. I know P.T. Pharoah was just trying to get some rest.
Well, they're barricades that they're beating on Corning and Ratchy.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're going. The wind took them out.
I mean, just looking at the long-range weather forecast, even just for the next couple of weeks, I mean, it doesn't look promising.
No, it didn't.
Um, I agree with Mike. I think it's kind of silly to push it just for the sidewalks. I mean, if we're not going to get it...
No one's going to use them in the winter.
Right, exactly. I think it's, I think we're better off waiting till spring, my personal opinion.
That is my observation, too, just a good free start, because all that soil's disturbed, so eventually it's going to settle, settle, and crack a sidewalk, potentially.
Yeah, the only issue is then, like, to mind, you need to do regrading and base work again in the spring, but if you want the good product, then...
Yeah.
That's it.
I think that's the best way to go.
Okay.
Yep. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. No old business, move on to new business. Item A, new business registration, 360 Enterprises Incorporated, 203 East Wilson Street, Mike Tattersall. Myself and Mike Schofield and Jim met with Mike Tattersall a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
And he's purchasing this building from his father, and he's looking to, you know, do something with it. It is zoned industrial, I believe, currently, so this fits into the zoning. What he wants to do is, he's looking at opening a screen printing embroidery and vinyl graphics, like vehicle, in the vehicle wrap, business. So, he's got Monday through Friday, eight to five hours.
So, will it be a, like a retail? I'm pretty sure there will be customers coming to the...
I think his intention, and I was hoping maybe he would be here, I think it's more, not necessarily a retail store, but taking orders, filling orders, you know, and shipping them, you know, to the customer. It's really, you know, this type of business is a popular business right now.
Is this similar to what that other couple was in here about the house, Dr. Lowery's house?
I believe so, yeah, yeah. We have not heard anything back from them, as far as I know.
The only issue I have with that location is the, I don't think the, it's not paved at all, is it? Is it all...
Well, that's the railroad right-of-way.
Well, correct. But I'm talking about, like, parking at the business, right?
It's a brand thing.
I mean, I don't, doesn't our, doesn't our zoning require some kind of hard surface for businesses? I mean...
We can take a look at it. I mean, if it is, you know, that's something that we can address with them.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's always been there, but I don't think we've been very good about enforcing it in certain instances, so...
Do they need to go to P&amp;Z for this?
No.
No.
Because the zoning is there.
It's already a business.
It's allowed, yeah, it's allowed.
It's industrial zoning, but...
This isn't allowed use in that zoning.
It could be retail.
Correct. Well, this, again, I don't believe it's, it's not walk-up retail. This is more...
Not walk-up retail, but...
Right.
Like, maybe online orders or something?
Yes. Fulfillment.
He's got plenty of room there. Does he, does Tattersall's own the land that the building sits on?
I believe so. Not a motion to approve the application for business registration for 360 Enterprises Incorporated at 203 East Wilson Street.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Morefka.
Jones?
Yes.
Morefka?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Item B, approved payment to First Midwest Bank in the amount of $108,794.90 for the 2013 series debt certificate for the street resurfacing project. So, this is a five, is it five-year?
It's five.
I think it was five. Anyway, this is a...
What?
Remember the length of time for the...
For the debt certificate for the street resurfacing program.
I know, I never get involved with it, that's actually.
When you get a chance, Steve, can you explain what a debt certificate is?
Well, maybe I'll let Mike explain it, and he'll probably know what to do.
Loan from the bank.
It's basically a loan, you know, for the, and I'm trying to remember what the, this, this goes back to...
13.
Yeah, 2013.
Was to do, we weren't having enough revenue to do big sidewalk projects, and so all the arterial streets were being neglected, so we did this debt certificate, so we could do a bigger project and get a lot of the, these more side streets done, along with the major streets, was the purpose.
Is there a difference between a debt certificate and a standard loan?
Um, I, you know, I, my recollection, I haven't worked specifically with debt certificates very much, but I, they're one of the authorized methods for financing municipal improvements in the municipal code, which is...
Right. I guess I may ask, why would that person do a debt certificate as opposed to...
I think it probably had something to do with the rate. You know, the rate on this, I'm just saying, the net interest rate was 2.536853 on this, and it was a total amount of, it was a $600,000 borrow. Total payback is 65899028.
And we've been paying that every year?
Yes. So, in 13, we paid $4,657.88, and 14, $110,455.50, and 15, $109,439.50, and 16, $109,383.10, 17, $108,224.90, and this year, $108,794.90. Next year will be the final payment of $108,034.50. But it was, yeah, the purpose of the debt certificate was street improvements.
And it's in the budget.
It's in the budget, correct.
I may as well approve the payment.
Right, so this is just approving our normal annual payment?
Correct.
My second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Morefka. And this was in the bill run, also.
I just wondered how it worked.
Right.
March?
Yes.
Morefka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
And Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Jones, I'll bring back further information on what distinguishes them from a loan for the...
And when you would utilize a debt certificate as opposed to a traditional, go to the bank and make a loan.
Got it.
Do you have any clarification of that, Mike?
I do not.
Okay. Item C, discussion and/or approval of the additional police pension contribution. At the last board meeting, we had a couple trustees that weren't here, so we kind of talked about this a little bit, and then brought it back for further discussion. One of the things that we've talked about doing with part of the proceeds from the Aqua sale is making a contribution to the police pension fund, trying to get it to a point where they can do a little more investing, a little bit more aggressive investing to help grow that fund.
Does the $2 million put us over that threshold?
It does. It does. I think it was 1.3 or 1.4 that it was...
2.5.
What's that?
2.5 puts you at the next level where you're able to...
I thought it was 1....
But we already have.
We have 1.5 already.
Yeah, so we have another million.
Okay, but total. You're talking total, gotcha. But with this $2 million additional, it would put us over that, and it would also give us a little bit better position, you know, in the fund.
Would it hurt to table it for a little while?
No, we don't have to do this immediately, you know, but it's something that we need to think about, you know, and I think the sooner we do it, the happier the...
I don't know what, I really don't know what any more tabling may do or that, because this is about the third meeting, it's been...
This is the second. Yeah, this is the second.
But we, you know, even Dave Rock came in earlier, gave a position of the pension board, so...
And you have the money, right?
Correct, yes. The money, the money is available. What's your, what's your concern, Ken?
I just don't know, that was our true intention of selling that asset, to take, you know, such a large portion of it and allocate it that way. That's my concern.
Okay.
I'd like to see in the future, you know, our investment invested in other ways that can cash flow, or that we could then allocate.
Well, and one of the discussions that I've had with the treasurer is that this will help us, you know, with cash flow in the, in the future, it just takes some pressure off of the budget, you know, down the road, too.
Because this will...
This will help get us...
...other contributions we're making to the fund?
It won't...
This will lower the rate that we, the actuary will have to say what we have to do to make, make the national, annual, the state tells us what we have to put in place with our amount of debt that's associated with the incurred liability, and if we have a larger than, that we have to make more up in the village audios every year. So, that's where we're at. This type of addition will lower the annual, next year's amount compared to this year, because there's more money picking up on the incurred liability.
Right, so that's all correct. Do we know how much, any idea how much it would lower in...
Well, we don't know, because the...
Right, because the actuary hasn't developed a number yet.
Reports have all been submitted.
Yeah.
So, they won't give you, they won't give you an estimate, because it all is done with the annual actuary state reports that are already been filed, they'd be filed October 1st.
Okay.
Has Mr. Rock taken a position on this?
Well, his, his position is that, you know, he believes $5 million needs to be done. I think it's up to the board to decide, you know, what to do. I think, I think we do have a responsibility as a board, you know, to help continue to fund this pension. You know, the voters put the downstate pension in place in 2006, and, you know, that was a question that was asked of them, and it was done, and now it's our responsibility to do our due diligence to fund the fund. And I think having this opportunity to help bolster the fund, you know, with the Aqua sale, I think it's, I think it's a good way to invest part of the funds.
So, I apologize for missing the last meeting, but I, for me personally, it would be helpful if there was a projection that talked about, what is the improvement to cash flow? What does Marcy think about it? What do our CPAs, the accounting firm that has brought this to light?
Right.
What is their opinion of it? And have Dave come back in here and say, "Yeah, this is a good thing, and this is going to move us further along the path."
We can do that.
But I was disappointed, and his answer was, "You owe me $5 million. You owe the pension board $5 million. I want $5 million." I didn't find that to be an acceptable answer.
No, we can gather that information and have it at the next meeting, hopefully.
I would agree with that.
That's correct.
I have a question. What happens if people don't put the money in, and that pension fund crashes? What's the end result?
If the entire downstate pension fund?
Well, villages or cities at first, and then if the whole thing collapsed.
Well, we've seen lawsuits from individual police and fire pensions when they don't feel a village has made contributions. We had a village, I recall, made $5,000 contributions for a couple of years in a row, which set off a lawsuit. For the overall system, I mean, it's kind of limping along.
Yeah.
I don't know what would happen if it went into full crisis mode.
Do we have any figures on what percentage of towns are in arrears?
Pretty much everybody.
I think all the towns.
Yeah, it's everybody.
So, nobody's 100% funded.
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought the auditor had some statistics on that.
I think there, I think there might have been in that audit report.
Yeah.
I think there was. Take a bet, look, take a look back.
Yeah.
Well, then, we will try to get some more information and bring it back to the board at the next meeting. Do I need a motion to table that?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Hamm.
Bowden?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Morefka?
Yes.
Item D, discussion and/or approval of paying off the debt of $295,035.55 for the purchase of the Public Works Building on Ratchy Road. Again, we talked about this at the last meeting, and bringing it back to the board for discussion.
I mean, this is what we talked about when we had the discussion about buying the building. We knew we were going to get this money. Otherwise, I don't know if we would have, you know, gone forward with that purchase, so, you know, I'd say, "Let's get this off the books and stop paying interest on a mortgage."
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Morefka to pay the debt of $295,035.55 for the purchase of the Public Works Building on Ratchy Road, the loan, the existing loan.
Is it through the bank?
It's through the Homestar. Yes.
What re-interest rate are we paying on it?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
March?
Yes.
Morefka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Bowden?
Item E, discussion and/or approval of an ordinance to redefine the village ordinance and to impose fines for blowing, shoveling, pushing of snow, leaves, grass into the streets.
So, we didn't put an ordinance into the packet, and when I talked to Jim, he recalled that there'd been this discussion, but didn't really feel like there was parameters given to really draft anything. We did put together something just for discussion purposes for tonight. So, this is just something very basic. We take this section about placing injurious materials on the street, that it's an existing prohibition in your, in your code, and adding, you know, that it's unlawful to shovel or otherwise put snow or leaves onto any street. With the idea being, this would give you something in your code to point to in the event that, you know, somebody was kind of abusing their, the system by continuing to do this even after a village warning or whatever, you could then issue a citation that would go over the circuit code.
I think one of the things that really kind of brought this up for discussion at the last meeting was Bob Hinky, the department, the Public Works Supervisor. Last year, we had a couple issues where, you know, Public Works would get the streets completely clean, curb to curb, and then a few certain individuals would come home and blow all of their snow into the middle of the street, and then that caused a traffic hazard for other residents driving down the street. They were asked not to do it, and they continued to do it, so I guess kind of looking for some teeth in the ability to stop that from happening this year.
Currently, there are no teeth.
Currently, there really are no teeth.
There's a question, who's to enforce it, and how are you going to enforce it? Can you drive by and see a pile of snow sitting in the street at the end of somebody's driveway, and then go write them a ticket? I think it...
Well, and that was a discussion.
To get redefined, so that it was clear who was doing what and how to go about enforcing it.
Code enforcement, right?
Well, it'd either be code enforcement or police. I mean, if it's a village ordinance, it would fall toward the police.
I mean, we talked about, too, the downtown area. I mean, you guys don't have any place to put the snows up in the street, so you'd be violating the ordinance every time it's snow.
Correct.
Put that on your Facebook page, show them stories.
I had that happen last year. We would clean the sidewalk off, and so people could get out of their car and walk onto the sidewalk, and then the police came, and I said, "Well, we want to abide. What should we do? I don't know what you're going to do with it." So, I mean, you need to have a solution of... I don't know what you're gonna do with it. So, I mean, you need to have a solution of.
Yeah, sure, you sure do.
Of what it's gonna be, because it's, it's awkward. I mean, everyone wants to do the right thing, but in some cases, there is no right thing.
Right.
Unless you push it out on the street and then the village came by and.
Well, and that's, and that's the general concept, you know. And again, we go back to the downtown, that's a conversation we've had 10 times here. And I personally try to get there early in the morning and get the snow pushed into the street so it can get out of there, because it just makes it better for myself and everybody else down there, at least on my side of the street. Yeah, and we, Michael and I talked about this today on the phone a little bit. And I said, it's, it's hard, you know, to come up with a, an ordinance, you know, that's really clear and enforceable, you know. You can't police common sense, unfortunately. And that's really what we need from everybody, is everybody to use common sense, you know. Don't put your snow into a clean street, you know, don't blow your leaves into the street, don't throw your grass into the street. And these are all things that are.
You know, if you ride around town, like during the summer or during the fall, it's the same small percentage of people that do that. You know, with the grass and the leaves. We should also include in that branches and sticks, because there are some people that put those out in the street. And then something else you probably need to consider, like where the sidewalks come out to the curb and then people put their leaves and branches and tree clippings on those sidewalks, which makes them impassable.
Right.
And for sometimes a week at a time.
Well, and they, they're, God, I mean, that's, I always try to put ours on the grass, but then they came by and raped them on the sidewalk, the Public Works did. And, you know, waiting for their truck to come by the next day. So I mean, like, well, no. It's a 42, you know, yeah, so I don't know. I just, I feel uncomfortable passing an ordinance that is not clear who's gonna enforce or how it's gonna be enforced. I mean, I don't know. We just have to depend on common sense and education and, I don't know. I, I just, I think it makes it difficult on the police to, like Donna said, you know, if there's snow on the street, you know, so I didn't put it there, somebody, you know, the guy across the street blew it on me, you know, I mean. Right, you'd almost have to actually have an officer see it. Yeah, he's like, you know.
Now, drones everywhere.
And I guess the reason I wanted this to come back, you know, for conversation is just to get it out and, you know, try to make people aware, you know, don't do it, use your head, you know, put your snow in your parkway or in the side yards initially even. I mean, there's, there's usually the opportunity to do that if there's absolutely no other opportunity besides the street initially, then I guess so be it. But once that street is clear, you know, you can't, just for the common good, you can't put that snow back out into the street, because it does cause a traffic hazard.
And a lot of times, I'll just say from the viewpoint, you know, when the snow comes, everybody is at the end of their patience level. And the more we get, the more it causes patience problems. And then they have no place to get it. Even some of us don't have the industrial sized snow blower. It's gonna launch it 500 yards away, which makes it tough, because most of these snows that we had last year, there is not, we didn't have the stream record, but then when you get a little bit of snow, you have the downtown area, what do you do with that snow? And then you get the residents, because they're at some of these divisions, they, you know, you have a place to blow it, because they're, they're close out there by McDonald's. Some of those places are right on top of each other. I don't know, it sure seems can, it can cause more harm to the public perception of the village than it can accomplish. A lot of times, like we said, word of mouth, talking to people, one-on-one, asking them to, try to get it pushed back, because the biggest thing they mostly complain about, because we, we keep blocking their driveway when they keep moving the snow, but that's just the way it goes. They get those endless complaints on that. You know, we still have some people that are, hey, you have to educate them about branches and leaves and grass. But in the real scope of today's world, the branches, trees, the leaves, grass and snow probably isn't the most serious thing we have going on in today's world.
Again, like I said, we just have to appeal to people using their heads and.
Like, like, we don't want to run downtown and arrest all the merchants that are trying to, they have no parkway and they sure can't watch it over their building, unless they create a hell of a conveyor system to like conveyor it to the end of the block. So I, there's no, there's no win or be all in that subject matter.
Well, again, we'll try to continue to get the word out to the public and ask for the cooperation.
A question for Black Chat, if can we put any flyers or something in the monthly water bill? Is there any?
I don't know. I don't think so, because I don't.
We have a little comment section, but you can only put a few words.
No, I'm talking about.
Oh, his?
His, yeah, there are. If we gave him, you know, 1,000 slips of paper, they stuck, you know, I.
I don't know how they fill, it comes from, probably from a central building.
Yeah, but I was curious if there's some way, but anyway.
All right, so we will just. Let that go.
Okay.
All right. Just a reminder to everybody, Christmas in the Village is Saturday, December the 8th, coming up really fast. Oh, we have, we got one more agenda. Item F, rescheduling or canceling the December 24th, 2018 Committee of the Hall meeting and regular Village Board meeting. Normally, in the past, we canceled that second meeting in December and then just, the first meeting will approve the payment of any normal bills to be paid and then hold our first meeting in January, then at the regular time. So just a motion to cancel the December 24th Committee of the Hall and regular Village Board meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Jones.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Back to Christmas in the Village, Saturday, December the 8th, all-day event, you know, flyers are around town. Everything's up on the Village Facebook page. Encourage everybody to get out and participate in all of the fun activities that are planned. We do have the lighted parade again this year at 5 o'clock. We do have the, the same pass out this year.
Glowstick.
Yep, the glowstick that we had last year. So ever, all the trustees are available to walk. We'll meet in the same place, there at the corner of West and Blue Devil Drive, right by the Warner Building, I think is where we met the last time. And we'll have all of those. We've got them in bags and easy to carry and distribute. So we'll go out ahead of the parade, you know, and pass those out. But those were very well received last year. Everybody seemed to enjoy that.
What are your thoughts?
The last I heard, I don't know, they were really starting to come in now, so hopefully at least the same as last year.
It started out last year.
Yeah. Hopefully the weather will cooperate. I've got two more applications here that were in my mailbox, so not here, in my garden. Anything else from the board?
Just a question about, so the new apartment building on West Street, we had a little discussion on landscape planning. Did anything ever get?
We have not found the landscape plan on that, so continuing to, to research that.
Okay. Like I said, just to reiterate, my concern that they put those bushes in the parkway, I think those should be moved, so. Looks like they have.
Actually, I should, I take that back. We did find the initial landscape plan. We didn't find anything besides, you know.
I think the initial one was altered, wasn't it?
The initial one was, I don't know. I mean, my understanding was, I talked to one of the planning and zoning members and they had a different recollection of, you know, something, like one part of the landscaping that was supposed to be done.
The minutes should reflect that, shouldn't they?
Yeah, we're going back to that now and going through all of that.
Who does the minutes at the P and Z?
Stacy. Anything else? Not a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Ham, second by trustee Jones.
Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes. Need hands and dirt?
That's something we need to put in place.